Or considered.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mr. Allgood. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. At this time, we're going to stand for our pledge of allegiance and our moment of silence, and we as a board want to extend to everyone to please stay safe, stay well, and that is our wish from Mecklenburg County Public Schools.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Nichols. Mr. Nichols.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt, members of the board. Tonight, we have several items for your consideration for votes for next month at our next month's meeting. The first of those is the special education annual plan. Ms. Hodges is not here tonight because we had more than 10, and she thought that she could just give the plan as we do regularly, and you have an opportunity to look at it through the month and bring any questions that you might have when you come back. But it is the plan as we typically follow the regulations through the years. We also have the Perkins Plan that is in the same situation, although I will have to say Ms. Hendrick has been working overtime trying to get it together because the federal guidelines have shifted on her two or three times, I think, in the process. So, but it does need to be reviewed so that it can be voted on at the April meeting.
I do have a question.
She is here. Okay.
Ms. Hendrick, if you don't mind coming up to the podium in case any board members have any questions. Thank you.
And there's a section in there about new programs that are being added. And is the automotive curriculum changing names, or?
No, it's just under certification due to next year. So that is the program that I add. It doesn't have to be a new one. You just have to submit a plan of study.
Okay.
Since we aren't renewing our certification for that with the ASC, that is just a plan of study that I decided to pursue, you can't use a plan of study that you have submitted within the last few years.
Okay. That was my question. And I didn't notice any other new things that we're adding for next year.
The only one that we're looking at is automation and robotics, where there was some data that I got from the school link. So my plan is within the next two weeks to get that to the DOE to be approved. And we shouldn't have any hip hop to get that approved because ours is approved in Halifax. And I have the application ready. I was just getting around the final data of one of our middle schools. But that will be in conjunction with the current Mechatronics and IT Academy that South Boston already has, part of the Higher Ed Center. They have a free total program. So this will be the third and final program for that.
So it would be at that site, then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Item C is the request that we have typically each year for the Holiday Lake bus to be used. That, too, would be voted on in next month's agenda. Mr. Mayhew is here if you have any questions about that, but it's a program that we've been supporting for several years, and I feel like it's worthy of our consideration again. Item D is actually getting us to the place where this meeting really need to be held tonight, even though we're under the guidelines by the state for 10 or more, and we have more than 10 here. But we also have a requirement to meet budget by certain times. And at last month's meeting, I gave you the overall picture with all of the charts and things that we will be presenting again when we have our public hearing. Tonight, I thought for benefit of the board, we would just be bringing to you, as I already have to the finance committee, the overall category informations of revenue and budget costs for each of the different areas, and just give you an update that the amounts have, some of the amounts have changed because of funding that we now see in the budget that the House and the Senate have agreed upon coming to us from the state, and then looking at the ADM, which we have to work with. Those are the types of things that change our numbers frequently. We went through this, but I'll go again for the whole committee. We are looking at next year receiving $1,154,746 more from the state than we have had this year. We are looking at another decrease in ADM for next year. We've had about a decrease of 50 students per year over the last many years. We are looking at the state asking us to give a 2% increase to our teachers, and then we are asking to keep, for the county to keep our step in place. And we could absorb the 2% in the step, but we feel like if we do that, we get the step out of whack again. So we will be asking for basically $2,295,645 for the overall 2% increase plus the step. But when you look at the money that we're getting from the state additionally, and as we look at some of the items that we have put in our budget, we are really only asking for an increase from the county to support our programs by a total of $1,880,131. And that's taking into consideration a decrease in ADM again for next year. Now, we will have other components, but this is what I anticipate. The PowerPoint presentation that you have that was updated from last month is indicative of these figures. And when we have the, next Monday, we're planning to have the public hearing, one way or the other, I will present that PowerPoint at that time for everybody's consideration. But if you have questions tonight, I give you the opportunity to ask.
Board members, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. Okay. The next part of the budget, which we have just last year begun giving to the Board of Supervisors, is our maintenance program. And I have been working along with members of the committee, the property committee, going through the items to ask Mr. Dalton if he would review that. There have been some changes. This is a, but, this is a five-year plan that obviously is changed every year because of what we are able to get done, what new needs come up. And so Mr. Dalton is going to give a presentation on the overall five-year division update that we will be sending to the, to the Board of Supervisors.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, Board. As Mr. Nichols was referring to, this is our five-year capital improvement plan. This includes everything outside of our normal operations and maintenance budget that we feel that we have needs for. We have gone over this significantly last year when we created the five-year plan, and as he was talking about, every year, this year, we drop off another year's added. So it's just basically revolving budget. But this year, what you were initially presented, I believe, back in February, we've had some significant changes within this. Now, all this was added to your board docs. And basically, what I'm looking at is the division projects for 2021. Of course, the other years are in there, but what we're concentrating on now is the fiscal year 2021 capital improvement projects. And we decided to, that the Board of Supervisors have been adamant that they feel they want to continue going on for renovations. So all of our schools by the next 10 years are basically new or renovated. With that being said, there's been some interest expressed by the Board of Supervisors, and particularly Wayne Carter, County Administrator, that he feels that we should use the vacated high schools, Bluestone and Parkview, in order to house our elementary schools. Chase City and Clarksville would go to Bluestone. LaCrosse would go to Parkview High School. And I've also, we've talked as a team, that if that's going to happen, that window needs to be fall of 2023, because as many of you know, when you move life out of buildings, buildings die. So we feel like if that, in order to make that happen and for us to hit that timeframe, that we need to start now, at least getting the ball rolling, with first step being a architectural study done of the three older elementary schools. Same thing that Crabtree did for us when we were looking to build our secondary school. So with that being said, we've gone back and we've put renovation dependent beside a lot of projects at the older three elementary schools. We've kept in there everything for South Hill because that is ours. We definitely want to keep, keep improvements going on South Hill Elementary School. The purchase of the activity panels, that, that's simply, we're trying to, we're trying to be prepared for when we go into the new school in 2022, of the fall of 2022, into our new secondary high school facilities and middle school facilities. The E-Rate Fund, that's, that's basically a trade-off of 20%, that, we're paying 20% of what we would federally get for technology. Everything else is pretty much self-explanatory, and you will see the line item next to the bottom, elementary school architectural study, and we've added $120,000 for that. Of course, we've kept our emergency contingency fund, just $50,000 for anything unexpected that may come up that's not in our operational budget or in our capital improvement budget.
I have a question.
So does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Bailey. I'm sorry, Ms. Bailey has a question.
On page four of the, the plan?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's on every year. There's an asterisk that says child nutrition needs will be covered with Fund Two. What is that about?
Ms. Pepper can definitely speak better to this than I will, but I'll give it a shot. There is also a fund across the road that the Board of Supervisor has that is called Fund Two. That takes care of any kind of equipment issues that we may have kitchen-wide, kitchen-wise. We still try to take care of the cafeteria tables and all, as we did at LaCrosse last year. But there is a fund across the road, and I don't know the balance, but that is used for food service needs.
So what you're saying is you haven't built in any capital improvement for kitchens? You're assuming that that Fund Two is going to handle those problems?
That is supposed to be what Fund Two is for.
Okay. I just.
It's something similar to the roof fund that they had.
Well, I knew about the roof fund.
Yeah.
I didn't know about Fund Two. Now I do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So are you in that document, or are you looking at the other document?
I have both.
Okay. Because on the total for 2020?
They are, you're exactly right. I noticed that earlier. The total for year two is, is significantly off, and also the total for 2025 is off. And I have corrected those on the spreadsheet, and I can give you all those updated sheets, but I noticed that when I was sitting there looking at it. So you're exactly right.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Dalton? Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Thank you.
Okay. That, of course, is a document that will be a part of our presentation of budgetary items to the Board of Supervisors when we come through, and will need to be voted on when we, it will be presented as well to the public hearing, and will be voted on when we have our vote. Next, we're going to have a complex update that we will be having each month from Skanska, and would welcome their representatives here tonight to be able to give us this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, members of the board. My name is Vince Mareska. I'm a program manager for Skanska. Skanska's services have been retained on this project to act as construction managers and agents of the owner. In that capacity, we are on-site every day during this process, this part of the construction process. We are actively and vigilantly managing the schedule, budget, and ensuring that the contractor builds this school to the contract documents.
The other one?
There's another one on the side.
Gotcha. A brief overview, going to walk through the construction processes as it is now, the schedule, the overall budget, and we'll see some progress photos. Right now, the project, the construction is in its infancy, but we are making some good, good progress. Right now, we're going through earthwork and site development. That includes clearing and grubbing of trees. That is nearly complete. It should be done this week, early next. Sediment basins and soap traps are being installed, both temporary and permanent. Cut and fill, the land has begun. That's moving dirt from one side to the other where it needs to be so we can level it out. And the contractor is starting to bring water to the site. He's going to have to bore under Highway 58 and then tap into it and bring it over. Excuse me. Final completion date is still 24 June of 2022. Notable upcoming dates, this takes us basically through the end of this year. We expect a central utility pad to be done on 27 March, the main building pad on 24 April, storm system, 8 October, rough grade of the small east parking lot on 11 November, and the sanitary sewer done December 31st. The budget still stands at $124,950,000. There have been no changes and no increases. The owner-direct purchase process is ongoing. That's basically a process where we, as agents of the owner, will go out and purchase the materials from the supplier, thereby saving the owner and the tax money. This is a picture of the northern retention basin overflow line. This is a permanent basin, and this is one end of it. This is the other end of it. This is a picture of clearing and grubbing of trees. As you can see, they had a lot to do. I'm sure you've driven by the site, and you can actually see into it now. Finally, here's one of our temporary sediment basins that will be filled in when the contractor's done with his site work. That's it.
Board members, do you all have any questions for our representative?
I'll make a comment. I've been, I've had the opportunity to meet this superintendent on the job in, in Skanska, and I'm going to tell you, we couldn't have a better team in place. I'm really impressed with these people. They really know what they're doing, and I was, you know, I'm impressed to see not only the contractor, but the backup from Skanska that doubled ensures what we're getting is going to be right, and we're not going to have another South Hill Elementary School situation. I think we'll have something to be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
I do have one question.
Ms. Garner.
I had a visitor to my home. The cemetery was moved, correct?
No, ma'am.
Oh, Lord. I told it, it was. Okay. Thank you.
Do you anticipate when that cemetery is going to be moved? I think I'd better answer that question.
So in working with the lawyers on the legalities of moving the cemetery, we went through a good three-quarters of a year trying to identify members of the family, because those that are buried there have no direct descendants. But they still had the oldest gentleman, who is the father of the other two, whose grave is the oldest one up there, had brothers and sisters that were in other places. And so we went through that process, and that took an exceptionally long amount of time to try to find, because they had to go on ancestry.com to be able to, to note that there were people in the area that were related to them. Each of them signed a document that they were not opposed to moving the graves. We didn't get all of that data in place to be able to turn it over to Sands Anderson. Actually, Brad King does not do graves or, or dirt. As he puts it, he does their academic and instructional types of things. So he turned it over to another lawyer at Sands Anderson, a Mr. Emerson, who is in charge of doing it. And he took the data that we have to the court, and the court said, well, now we need to have a 60-day period in place where we advertise that if there's anybody who knows and needs to, has any opposition to this, they would let us know. That 60-day notification with publishings in the newspaper and whatnot, I believe, just ended this week.
Monday.
On Monday. And so now they've gone back to the court to request with, with no one having any opposition to it whatsoever, now they've gone back to the court to request that we be allowed to move forward. Upon the time that we can move, that we get that judgment from the court, we are immediately available. We've already put out the bid. We have the company to do the moving. We have the place for it to go. There's no cost in that. There is cost in, in doing the other, but you voted to accept the lowest bid on moving the graves. So our goal is to have that hopefully done before the end of the month.
I will add that that does not impede our construction right now.
She was just worried that somebody kin to her was there. And I said, well, it's being taken care of. They are being moved, but I couldn't put anything on top of them.
I have a question.
Mrs. Smith?
The, the family is, as it split up, the, the part of the family that left apparently began attending the Concord Baptist Church, which is right near Bluestone Creek. And there's now a camp in that area and the old church building. And they have given us three plots there to be able to bury this, these three family members.
Thank you.
And grave sites that will be, I mean, gravestones that will be moved with them.
Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to item G. Each year, we have to determine whether we will continue to work with the SBA on their policy services subscription. That will be coming up for your decision. There, I might add that there are significant policy changes that have come this year with legislators and legislation that's going on. And so when we have our public hearing, we have asked for a work session so that Mr. Jeffers can go with us through some of the significant changes. Where there's no real change or just change of words, we don't want to worry about that. But there are some areas that there's some fairly significant changes, and we need to be able to go through them so that you will know when, when they go into them and you adopt them. So that I'm going to ask for a work session on, but we're giving them to you tonight so that you can be in reading through them.
Anybody have any questions?
The agreement. Is that, that's what you're talking about? The agreement you gave to us?
Yeah. Well, we will be getting you the policy. I think we did get the policy to everybody as well.
We had a lot. I was like.
Yes, it was a lot this year. Thank, thank you. All right. And then we have the business honor roll nominations for V SBA that we put in practice each year, recognizing businesses that have worked very well with us. You have a list of those names. I won't divulge them in public right now because we wanted to be a secret when we honor them, but at the April meeting, we'll be asking you to vote on those as well. As far as my other comments, I'd like to just point out that, of course, the COVID-19 issue has shut down schools by the governor's order last Friday, and we are in a position of two weeks. And we are looking to work with the students. The teachers have done a very good job of trying to make available updates for students to be able to follow. We have to be very careful with that. It cannot be new information. It needs to be reinforcing things that they've already learned. We have some concerns that in order to be equitable, we would not give out new information. So we are seeing many of our teachers continuing to give materials out, as well as identify online support services that students can use. I know one of our teachers is even making videos of art that she's doing and wanting to share with us. That's been very, very helpful, and we applaud them for that. We are also under guidelines from the federal government that while the students are out, we need to be making meals available to them. And we'll just give kudos to Mrs. Moore. She has worked hard and with her staff to be able to make these meals available. Today was the first day of giving them breakfast for tomorrow morning and lunch for today. I will show you. Every student that came through got a frozen.
Pass that around, I'm hungry.
I'm sorry? You what?
Pass that around, I'm hungry.
And then cold part of the lunch and a hot part of the lunch for the students to be able to give out. And I was able to get to, well, you can pass them around if you'd like to. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to see what's in that.
Of course, I'd end up with the frozen part. So on this first day, we had 109 participate at South Hill. We had 35 participate at Chase City, and we had 49 participants at Clarksville. And we are continuing to give out information through the all-call to let students and their parents know about the options that they have for this. The meals are for students only, but that is at no cost to them, and we are providing these each day that we will be closed to, for the students' nutrition. Additionally, I would just add that this has been, well, everybody understands, this has been a first in the nation for schools being closed down. And, and in many ways, the rules and regulations seem to be changing on a daily basis. I'm having meetings with other superintendents. We're having meetings from the state superintendent. We're having meetings with the governor, and we're getting updates all the time. I had a more recent update this afternoon at 3:00. We're going to have another one nationally and statewide on Friday at 2:00, and then again at 4:00. So we're looking down the road. The information that we're getting from the CDC is it's an eight-week process, even though the governor has currently closed for two weeks. We will not be surprised if we don't end up closing longer than these two weeks. In fact, we have been given information to say this could last for the rest of this semester. So DOE is going through a large process in trying to determine about graduation and graduation expectations that may be waived so that students can go ahead and graduate. They're looking at waivers for us for SOL tests. If we're going to miss all this time, that's one of my biggest concerns, is if we don't have the instructional time, how are we going to prepare the students? And so we have not been given that waiver, but they are looking at those waivers along with the U.S. Department of Education. So I will keep members of you, you on the board, and I will also continue to get information out to the community of the teachers and the principals about this as we go along. So if you have any other questions or recommendations for this, I would certainly like to hear them now.
Well, I do know that Mecklenburg Electric had two series on today on Facebook dealing with water basins and the pollution. And I sat there and watched it. It was about 15 minutes. And then it was another one right below it. So anybody that needs reviewing science, this is one area on Facebook. And I've noticed, and I have to really compliment these teachers. They have stepped up to the plate, offering websites and information, even some of their telephone numbers in Facebook so that they can be contacted, even if the students weren't in their class, if they needed help. So our teachers have really been working hard, so I'll have to commend them. And I'll have to commend the cafeteria workers, too, because I saw them, they were on Facebook, and Chase City on metric today, too, smiling, handing out their little bags and all. So, I think everybody's working together.
We got a great staff. We got great teachers, great teachers. Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a question on a separate item.
Ms. Bailey?
Whenever you get done.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I did, I did just want to point out that this whole process also requires a significant, what we call a deep clean of buildings and buses and everything else. The buses have been the part that have been the most difficult to try to keep up with ahead of time. The buildings, Brian and his staff have been doing an outstanding job in, in going in with appropriate disinfectants and working with them through the year. So that was not as much of a concern because of the attention we've been paying to cleaning the buildings to try to get rid of the flu. You know, we, we really had many more cases of flu than anything else, and its impact has been devastating for a number of years. Although the numbers this year have not been as great as they were last year by the ADM figures that we've been putting together. So we, we know, though, that it's going to be requiring, and Mr. Mayhew has actually scheduled for buses to be able to come in, not only for maintenance, but for some significant cleaning of all of them to make sure that when we come back, that, that we'll be ready to roll with them. So we appreciate all the efforts of all the staff in trying to meet the needs of our students and the community to protect us from this.
And what the food has been distributed, students have to come to the school, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Palmer. We, you know, we've heard about some school divisions that are actually using their buses to get information out. I've checked around Region Eight, and the only one in Region Eight that is using buses is Greensville, and they're using that only in Emporia, as I understand it, which is a smaller distance. The, the concern, which was brought up immediately when we began talking about that, was the amount of time and distance where these meals, some lunches are hot or items are cold, and they need to remain that way. And when, when you get way out into the county, I mean, bus drivers are already driving a long way. The buses are not refrigerated, and so we were. are already driving a long way. The buses are not refrigerated, and so, we were concerned about the, the health aspects of the meals when we got them out that far.
The only reason I was thinking about it at all was whether or not there were certain areas, for example, if the bus were to go into some parts of Chase City and just stop, and people would come there, because I was concerned as to whether or not the same students who can't pay for their lunch or their children can't get food, they may not have gas to drive to the school to get food. And that's the only reason I even talked about.
I was thinking along those terms also, and I was just wondering, did the idea of using or having the buses drive to the same locations where the, the after-school programs would take the children, was that considered to help those children? I was concerned about that too, them being able to, all the children being able to come and pick them up.
Well, we are, we are restricted on the amount of time by guidelines, federal guidelines. And refresh my memory on that, Ms. Moore. Something, it was an hour and a half was given at some point on...
That's the time it was determined that we would deliver meals, I mean, start of meals in half a series.
Okay. So, we can still look into, particularly depending on how long this lasts, we can look at what options might be available for transporting out into the distance.
Well, that was, that was the other thing. Who knows time-wise, how long this is gonna go on? So, if that is the case, if it is going to be a long process, that some of these things could come into play.
Right. It's just like everything else. It changes on an hourly basis. And so, you know, we wanted, we want to continue to do what's best and within reason of what finances and support we have to be able to do those things.
Ms. Bailey?
Whenever he's ready.
That would do it.
Mr. Jeffers presented to us at our work session in February, a couple of documents that he had been working on, administrative procedures and employee handbook. When do we, when's that gonna be brought back to our attention, and do we have an opportunity to have some input on that?
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Those, as I think were presented, they're in hands of all the directors and the principals now, and assistant principals, for any review and comment for both of those, the administrative procedure manual and the employee handbook. When those are complete, they'd be shared with you guys, but as you, they don't have to be approved. But if you have concerns, you have copies of them. If you'd like to bring them to our attention, we certainly, you'd like to take that into account as we finalize those revisions. The goal would be that they finalize this year, and they go into impact for the 2021.
So, we don't, we don't need to approve those documents?
That's correct. That's correct. These are the administrative procedures to support the policies the board adopts.
Okay. And so, if I have any questions, contact you.
Yes, ma'am. Please. Thank you. And for everyone, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? No, I had another item, but you wanted to put it under the Joint Ed Committee, so I'll wait until we get to that part.
I'm gonna take this opportunity, real quick, Chairman Marks, to, it says, "Public Content," and I have the will to address an issue, and I would like to address an issue in the public. Back before Christmas, I was approached by some community members of where I live, in South Hill District 5, Ward 3, about running for public office. And when I called and asked our local registrar about this, I was told that I could not do it. It was unconstitutional. After doing some research, I found online where an actual school board member was able to serve two capacities. It was an opinion that was rendered in 1996. When I called the registrar back, he said, "Let me get in touch with the state registrar." He, Jason, Mr. Corwin called me back about an hour later, and he says, "Gavin, I just want to let you know that you've proved me and the state registrar wrong, because there was an opinion that was rendered, and there are no dissenting opinions since 1996." So, with that being said, I am running for council position in Ward 3. It will not affect my job here on the school board. And if anybody has any further questions, I encourage you to please contact either Jason Corwin or the state registrar, and you can find that information on the website. Thank you. Moving on, committee reports. Finance Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met this afternoon at 5:00. We discussed the budget and answered questions to the committee about the budget, which was presented tonight. And we also went over the payment of the bills. The recommendation will be by the committee to pay the bills.
All right. That is a recommendation from the Finance Committee. The Instruction Committee.
Doris, if you would take one and pass it on.
I'll pass them.
The Instruction Committee met, March the 10th, as part of a, it was really a, more of a administrator-staff meeting, and Doris and I were invited to attend, that dealt with the reading initiative that our state superintendent has placed extra emphasis on, since the students in the state of Virginia needed some help in that department. Each of you are gonna get a copy of the handouts that Ms. Height made for us, and it also has the minutes of the meeting there. And we discussed that day, an improvement plan for our reading instruction in the county. And so, if you have any questions, I would suggest that you contact Mr. Nichols, and, and then, and he can answer your questions for you.
Any board members have any questions? I know you all just received this information. Mr. Edwards? Anybody? Okay. I'm sorry. Like Mrs. Bailey said, I believe this is coming from her and Ms. Garner, both on this Instruction Committee. If you all look through this and have any information about this, please follow up with Mr. Nichols, and then he can get the information back to the board. All right?
I might just add...
Mr. Nichols?
This is a very important component. We've been looking at addressing it for a long time. But I'm very, very pleased that the state is coming in and recognizing that there is a need for some significant streamlining of what we're doing in our classrooms to help with reading. And it's a focus on phonemic awareness, use of phonics, a lot more reading at all levels, the whole idea of reading in the content area at the secondary level, and even at the university level, the idea that we need to do a little bit more training of our pre-service teachers to know how to teach reading when they come to us. So, we are looking at that. Would also bring to your attention, as we look at this, that actually, this goes to the other part, but there was the component that we mentioned, taking a good, strong look at our, our ADM teacher, student-teacher ratios, and how we can best use that. Our numbers in the county have decreased significantly, I mean, in individual schools. And it's not all been on the west end. It's been more significant on the west end than on the east end. But the numbers of students in our county has significantly increased, and we're seeing that impactful in the classrooms with very few changes. And we're seeing the need for more reading specialists. We're seeing the need for the behavioral specialist and things of that nature that may not come out with the county's budget, but as we look at making a better use of our teaching staff and our staff overall, we think this year, we will be able to help pull some of those things back in, those programs back into place without sacrificing any in the, in the classroom. So, that was a discussion that I had specifically, or that we had in the, in the Instructional Committee. I also just brought it to the attention when we had, that was the other thing that we had, is I just brought it to their attention, when we had the joint education, local joint education committee meeting. And I think it's, everybody that we talked to, from the two board, from the board, there was nobody on the board supervisors involved in this. But this was just our people are in agreement that we need to be looking at that more carefully, and we'll be bringing a plan to you for that end.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Height. She put these documents together for the board. She did my homework for me.
Thank you, Ms. Height.
Love Ms. Height. Thank you.
All right. All right. Next, we're gonna go to letter C, which, Mrs. Bailey, we amended that to add the capital improvement instruction committee. And what day did that committee meet?
I can give you a report on that. The capital improvement committee met on Thursday, the 12th, at 3:00 p.m.
Who all was there, Mr.?
The president was Brian Dalton, Abe Jeffers, Lyndale Palmer, Paul Nichols, and Glenn Edwards. What we discussed was basically a mirror image of what Mr. Dalton presented to us tonight. That's exactly what we talked about, the five-year plan, and how to just go into 2021, how to deviate on the spending and not spend extra money and waste money on schools that we're gonna abandon, and how to continue to maintain our high, our two high schools so that we can move the elementary kids into it, and also to recommend to the board that we go ahead and move, move forward with this, with a study to, to see what we need for the elementary schools and try to get some price guidance from someone to, to give us more information, so that we can be studying it for two years while the new school is built and move directly into some projects, rather than letting, having a three or four year lapse in time. So, that's, Mr. Dalton already explained it to it, and I think it's in our packet.
All the other members present, Mr. Jeffers, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Dalton, to the best of your knowledge, is that all that was discussed in that meeting that day?
Mr. Nichols just also said that he did all those numbers.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
Basically, what has been said, we, he may have hatched on some of the other things, but basically, that's what he said.
Mr. Dalton, to the best of your knowledge, was that was all that was discussed in that meeting that day?
Yes, sir. It was more of that than the numbers.
Okay. Thank you for your information. Mr. Nichols, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you. To the best of your knowledge, that was all that was discussed in that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Do we have anybody, Mrs. Giammonio, signed up for public input?
No, sir.
All right. We're gonna go right into our action items. Can I get a recommendation that the school board approve the minutes of the special school board meeting held on February 10th, 2020?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mr. Allgood. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a recommendation that the school board approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on February 18th, 2020?
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Ritchie, a second from Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Stain.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, Mr. Edwards.
I was absent. I was sick that day.
Okay, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, the bills.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even know why I missed a meeting.
No.
Actually, I wouldn't sit. No.
Who's your doctor's? No.
The Finance Committee recommends we pay the bills.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the school board approves the personnel recommendations?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mrs. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the school board approves the 2020 business honor roll nominations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Allgood, a second from Mrs. Garner. Roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Under reminders, I just want to mention again, Mr. Nichols, our superintendent has always, already touched on this. March 23rd is our public hearing on our 2021st budget. At this point, I know we do have a reminder here that our spring break, schools are closed. They're closed right now, and to our best knowledge, they will remain closed until we know otherwise. Our regular school board, next school board scheduled meeting is gonna be on April the 20th, and I would assume we would still have that meeting. And with that being said, board member remarks, and Mr. Edwards, we'll start with you this evening.
I don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Allgood?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Ritchie?
No comment.
Ms. Smith?
No comment.
Ms. Bailey?
Only way to become a better reader is to read. Read while you're at home.
Ms. Garner?
I would like to thank everybody for their work in this situation that we have. Thank you very much.
And again, I would just like to ditto that and just commend all of our teaching staff and our administrators and our buildings. We're doing an excellent job. I think we have stepped up to the plate, and we've met the challenge head-on, and I just pray that this will go away quickly. With that being said, do I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ms. Garner?
Second.
Second. Ms. Smith, have a good night.